All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the 208th regular meeting of the Greenfield City Council. It's August 19, 2020. I called this meeting to order at 7:02 PM. I'm Otis Wheeler, the Vice President. I'm filling in for President Stempel, who hoped to join us remotely but had technical difficulties. This meeting is being recorded and videotaped by the City Council and GCTV. If anyone else present is doing the same, please notify me at this time. Hearing none. Clerk Scott, would you please take the roll?
Certainly. Counselor Jarvis?
Here.
Counselor Glenn?
Present.
Counselor Disorder?
Here.
Counselor Bottomley?
Here.
Counselor Dolan?
Here.
Counselor Gilmore?
Here.
Counselor Wheeler?
Here.
Counselor Mayo?
Here.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Here.
Counselor Elmer?
Here.
Counselor Forgie?
Here.
Counselor Ricketts?
Here.
Mr. Vice President, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Clerk Scott. We will now take the Pledge of Allegiance. This is voluntary. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll now move on to page three in the agenda packet. And let's see, I'm gonna have to scroll here myself. Oh, and I'm stuck in a loop of the agenda minutes. I'm sorry. Let's see. Motion to approve the minutes of July 15.
So moved, Ricketts?
Seconded, Gwen.
Moved by Counsel Ricketts, seconded by Counsel Gwen. It's their discussion. I noted one typo on page six. Lorine Flockersy's name was misspelled. There was a typo. Her name is spelled L-O-R-E-N. So I think that could be a friendly amendment. Is there any further discussion on the motion before us? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving minutes? Oh, boy. We're gonna have to do a roll call vote, as always. Clerk Scott.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Glenn?
Aye.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld? Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Aye.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Clerk Scott. Before we move into communications, I want to let the public know that if you're here to speak to public comment, please type your name and your street address, at least the name of your street, if not the number, into the chat. And we will take public comment in the order that it is signed up for. But first, we have communications from the Superintendent and the School Committee. So I see Chair Prayati here.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm not sure if Superintendent Harper is joining us this evening. She may not be. She tried to take the personal day today. I don't know how well that worked out, but she did try, put a lot of effort there. So I would not be surprised if she's not on the line with us. And I will keep my comments short, and then, of course, I'll be happy to answer some questions, if there are some. So we met a week ago, last Wednesday, for a short five and a half hours or so to finalize our remote learning plan and our move towards an unprecedented fall semester in the Greenfield schools. And we did vote unanimously as a committee to approve, endorse the Remote/Remote Plus Learning Plan for the district, which will have all of our students beginning remotely. The plus piece refers to working towards bringing students back to in-person learning in various categories as quickly as we can, but also, most importantly, as safely as we can for our school community. The plus piece specifically works on assisting students first who are in some DESI categories. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has identified some categories that if you are going to bring students back in person, that you prioritize those. If you think about it for just a second, categories of students that you would expect, English language learners, students with significant special needs, students who really don't have adequate access in a remote environment. And we would prioritize those categories of students first and follow that with identifying some ways to bring all students back in. You know, the buzzword of 2020 is these pods, so these in-person pods that would happen at the schools. We don't have timing worked out for any of this yet. We don't have transportation worked out for any of this yet. And I know that makes a lot of folks apprehensive, but unfortunately, that is the way of the world right now. What we also unanimously voted to do in order to help us with planning and moving forward is to meet as a school committee approximately every two weeks from this point forward, so that we can begin reviewing what the current reality is in the area with the virus, how things are moving with the schools and our students, and our preparations to bring students back in person. The two-week piece, depending upon how closely you kind of follow what's happening with the virus spread, two- and four-week intervals seem to be super helpful in determining if there are patterns and outbreaks, if case counts are going down. And that is what we are planning to do, is kind of keep on top of it and allow the general public and the school community to know what's happening on a more regular basis than just our once-a-month meeting. I think I lost track of how many school committee meetings we'd had before we even hit the pandemic in March. So if we go back and count, I think it could be a record for school committee meetings in one calendar year. We have also submitted all of our plans to the state. One thing that I found very interesting about the politics around all of this is that it did take the Superintendent more than a couple of hours last Friday to upload our information on our three plans to the DESI website. And in none of the questions that she was asked about the plans, did they ask about how much any of it would cost. Budgeting for all of this has not been a part of the conversation from the state level, or obviously, the federal government. And the expenses are significant. I'll just give you one example. The district, I believe, has spent about $75,000 or $80,000 on Plexiglas. That's $80,000 we don't have. But we've spent it on Plexiglas, anticipating we will be able to have students back in school and we will need it in certain areas of the buildings. Let's see. We did also vote unanimously again to reduce by 50% the tuition that is charged for some families at the Academy of Early Learning. That's the preschool in the district. That's due to, many families who are paying tuition are doing that because there's a childcare component with going to AEL. And obviously, that's not happening right now. So we felt a good faith effort on that was to actually reduce the tuition for the academic year. And the final piece is just some staffing. For those of you who know, Principal Nancy Putnam, who was principal at Federal Street School, she's decided to retire, and man, am I jealous of her. And she is actually, has agreed to move into the part-time Academy of Early Learning principal position for a two-year period. And some of you may also know Michelle Fenimore from the middle school, and she will be moving into the principal position full-time at Federal Street School. So we at least have our leadership-level staffing set for now. And we are beginning negotiations, I believe, tomorrow. The official negotiations begin with the GEA, our union, to impact on related to the remote learning, and hopefully, that will go smoothly. And I think that is my report. I did want to acknowledge, I say this, I think, every time, but Superintendent Harper and the folks that have worked with her on our three plans for opening have put in a tremendous amount of work. I think Superintendent Harper is probably working 70 to 80 hours a week on a slow week. She's really put in a lot of effort to put us where we are. We've been on time or early with all of the state deadlines, although the deadlines for the state don't really seem to matter all that much because they keep changing the parameters and changing the goals. But it is what we intended to do, and at least in this situation, we're fairly pleased with where we're at, to be able to get started with remote learning. And I will happily take any questions folks have.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Looks like we have a question from Counselor Disorder.
Go ahead.
First, I wanted to say thank you for all those hours and hours of meetings. It's unbelievable, the work that you've done. Thank you so much. I had a question about the, two things, the computers. This is just reading, that it's hard now for people to get computers because they're not making enough of them. They can't keep up with that. Would that be something that we are having a problem with? That's my part.
What's the second part? I'll take them both.
The second part was, I just heard this little bit about the pods, the pods and tutoring. And I don't know if you would, could, would want Karen to go into that at all, but, and that's okay if you don't.
Are you talking about pods, like district-sanctioned pods? Or are you talking about homeschool pods, which is another thing that's cropped up?
The homeschooling ones.
Oh, sure. Okay. So I'll do the Chromebooks first, and then I'll rant a little bit about homeschool pods. So the Chromebooks, we placed an order, I think it was in April, for almost, don't quote me on this, but I think it was like close to 100% replacement of the Chromebooks we already had in the district. My understanding is that we've given out the vast majority of the Chromebooks that we had on hand. And I am fairly certain the Chromebooks that we ordered in April have not yet been delivered. There is, as you suggested, like a lot of different consumer items that you try to get at this point. There are some hiccups in the supply chain, and there's significant increased demand. But our plan is to, you know, take delivery of those Chromebooks and get them out as soon as we can. And I, oh, I'm sorry, guys. I need to help. Yeah. One second. I'm sorry. Very sorry. This is what remote learning is like, just so we're all aware. The volume was too loud on the TV, and he doesn't know how to use the remote. So, Chromebooks. I have not heard that we have any concern about being able to deliver them. It's our plan to begin rolling out what we have in the next couple of weeks. I should have mentioned the planned start date for school is September 16. That's moved nine days from the original start date of the year. So we've got a little bit of leeway time if there is an issue with Chromebooks. And hopefully, that will all work out because we're kind of, you know, dependent on the supply chain there. And then, oh, the homeschool pods. I'll keep it quick. I can't think of a whiter response to problems in educating our students in public schools than to create pods of private learning amongst small family groups, which is what homeschool pods are. That is just so counter to what we are trying to do in terms of moving forward with de-institutionalizing racism in our schools. There are not families of color out there in Greenfield trying to identify ways to do homeschooling pods. It is not even on their radar. It is not, for the most part, within a lot of our families' capabilities, regardless of the color of their skin. But it is disappointing to hear that many families that I think of as really good advocates for what we do in our public schools, who under a normal year would be sending their children to our schools, are now trying to decide how to homeschool in this situation, which often means spending money on tutors and private teachers at a time where most families don't have that option. That's my comment.
Thank you very, very much.
You're welcome. Happy to take any other questions?
Counselor Jarvis?
Hi. Just real quick, I mentioned to the Superintendent during the CRE meeting the other night that about Comcast offering a discount to families for internet service that would have to be sponsored by a nonprofit, i.e. like the school department or something. She was gonna look into it. I just wanted to get the word out there that if, you know, it would be mainly for people that can't get GSET, that could get Comcast. Personally, I have pledged that I will sponsor a student for a year to, so make sure that that student has the opportunity for his or her education. I have six people in line already. I think you need a minimum of 25, and I'm sure that we are gonna have more than that. So I just wanted to get that word out there, so counselors could probably spread the word ahead of time. If that happens, great, and we can make sure that all the students have opportunities to the internet.
Thank you for that. And we've worked pretty extensively with both Comcast and with GSET since March to identify ways to make sure we have adequate internet for as many folks as we can. And we also had some hotspots in the parking lots of the schools themselves. So the students, I think it might have only been the middle and the high school, that students and their families could physically go to basically the parking lot and hang out and have internet access. But both of those entities, Comcast and GSET, have been exceptional partners in moving this forward. And as people identify as needing internet access, we will work with them to make sure we can get it. If the, you know, if the stars align to get it for them where they are and with what they have, we absolutely will do that. Thank you for that.
Yeah, there's a cost. Like I said, I would, you know, basically, it's gonna probably be like $100 per student or something like that. But I would gladly, I have people lined up that will gladly donate.
That's awesome. I'm making a note about that. Thank you, Counselor Jarvis. That's great.
Next, we have a question from Counselor Gilmore.
Yes, my question is for Counselor Jarvis. He just answered my question, but it hiccups a little, so I didn't hear. How much does it cost to sponsor a student for a year?
I believe it was like, it was like a little under $5 a month or something like that. So whatever, how many months they went to school or whatever, they would need the internet. I think it was like $5.99 or $6.99 was their rate that they had thrown out there. It was in one of our emails, I believe, from Comcast. But it was like that, so it would be, you know, so I figured $100 was just a round figure would be more than adequate.
Great, thanks.
Next, Counsel Ricketts?
You're on mute, Penny. That's gonna be the title of my COVID memoir, by the way. Amy, you're on mute.
Thank you. I vowed that I wasn't even going to speak tonight at all, but between you, Amy, speaking out about home pods and racism and all of that, you know, it's bringing me on the brink of tears. And then Counselor Jarvis blew my mind on top of that about sponsoring a child. So I'm all in. I want to be part of that. And I know that we're not necessarily doing Bloom in backpacks because they're not going anywhere, but I still feel like they may still need some resources for their house. So whenever that's getting figured out, if that could be an email to counselors and with a drop-off spot, I do want to help. So thank you from the bottom of my heart, Amy and Counselor Jarvis. You have both incredibly made my night.
Thank you, Counselor Ricketts. We couldn't ask for a better community here. I mean, honestly, we have people pulling together all over the place. And we primarily try to do the right thing as much as we can. It's a great, Greenfield is just a tremendous place to live because of things like that. I've seen one GoFundMe campaign just yesterday from, I think the person might be a teacher in the district, and they are raising funds to buy dry erase boards for every student to start the fall. And I will find that, the GoFundMe link, and make sure that that gets sent out to the counselors as well. Dry erase boards, if you haven't thought at all about remote learning, first of all, you're lucky. But second of all, dry erase boards help for being able to write something, show it to the teacher, erase it, and then be able to use it again. So it's a great, convenient, and very inexpensive tool for a remote learner to use. And so I know that there was a tremendous response already yesterday, the first day of that campaign, but I'll make sure the link to it gets out to the counselors. And thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Otis, you're on mute.
Well, happens to the best of us.
I can stick around for a while if you want. Yet another free service I provide.
No, I think we'll let you go. Thanks again. It's a Herculean effort, and I think you have the council's full support.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Appreciate being with you, and good luck tonight.
Okay, so next up, we have communications from the mayor, city officers and employees. So I'll turn it over to Mayor Weidergardner.
Good evening, folks, and thank you, Counselor Wheeler, and thank you, Chairwoman Prueetti, for your report this evening. I don't personally have a lot from the mayor's corner to report to you tonight, just a couple of items on my list. And then I'll let Liz Gilman, Finance Director Gilman, give you the end-of-year update with regard to our finances. And then certainly, Chief of Staff Danielle Letourneau can update those counselors who may not be aware regarding the Veterans Lease that's on your agenda tonight. So I'll get started. I know that there have been some rumors out there on Facebook, and I've had a couple of people talk to me about it in person, that the concern that the Registry of Motor Vehicles in Greenfield will not reopen. And I want to put that rumor to rest and just simply say that, upon hearing that, I did write a letter this week to Secretary Pollock explaining that we definitely wanted to keep it open and the reasons why. And that letter was CC'd to Representative Mark and to Senator Joe Commerford. I did just speak with Senator Commerford today regarding it. She got back to me right away, and she has contacted one of her contacts in the, associated with the RMV, who has assured her that the City of Greenfield's RMV will not be closed permanently. The one piece that's left unknown at this point in time is that we don't know the date that it will reopen. This contact was going to escalate it up the food chain in the RMV and see if he could not, if he couldn't get at least a date to reopen and perhaps reopen sooner than they may have been planning on allowing it to happen. So more will be known after, she assured me that she will keep in contact with me on the status of that, and will certainly, from our end, keep up to date on it. So that's sort of the chapter and verse on the RMV. I do want to say that the City Hall offices have been open now for several weeks, every day of the week from 10 to 1. If you'll recall, we started just on certain days a few weeks ago, well, now a month ago. COVID time all runs together, as we well know. I heard today that it's actually been 21 weeks since most communities began planning and doing it, and that just seems outrageous to me, but it is, in fact, the case. And we're still working on that. But what I wanted to say about the City Hall offices is really just to tell you that the citizens of Greenfield have been showing up to use the city offices downtown. It's, I think, appreciated by many, many people. We have had days, sometimes when there has been a line all the way to the, you know, out to the sidewalk and beyond. You know, I think the most, and we can, we've served at one time in a day, was 75 or so people, maybe a few more. And we have had the benefit of wonderful greeters that are part of the Senior Tax Work Off Program. They've been scheduled by your own Jenny Disorder, who's sort of the command officer of the greeters. And she's been doing a great job. Counselor Disorder, thank you so much. And I want to also praise both Clerk Scott and her team, and Treasurer Collector Kelly Varner and her team, and Chief Assessor Kimberly Mu for the work that they've been doing in their offices every day that we have been open, and they've been doing a great job. So they deserve a big round of applause and thank you from really everyone in Greenfield. So good on that. Danielle Letourneau has certainly been leading that effort from her part, and I thank her as well. And the last thing I wanted to put out before I turn it over to Liz and to Danielle is just to simply back on to... on to what Amy has said already, and to praise the great team for working as hard as they did on the school reopening plan. I think we've done it right. I'm hoping that it works out as well as we all hope it works out. We went to school on remote learning in the spring. We think we've been good at fixing some of the pain points there. So I just want to say thank you again to the schools, the school committee, and to the great team. And that's all I have. I'm happy to take a question or two if necessary, but I'd also mindful of the time for this evening, be happy to turn it over to Liz. So I'll let you decide on that. Counselor.
Thank you, Mayor. We will take, take some questions before moving on. Counselor Mayo has one. Counselor Mayo.
Thank you, Vice President Wheeler. Mayor, I have a question for you regarding post offices in town. You know, there's been, we've heard in the news that there's been post offices, boxes being pulled away from their sites, and post offices actually, or machines actually being closed as close as Springfield. You know, we're, you know, coming up, you know, close to an election, a very important election. And I just want to know that, has there been any talk about what Greenfield is going to do, or if they've, if they've done something already to kind of put ease the Greenfield residents about the post office situation?
Well, I'm glad you asked, Counselor Mayo. I did forget to mention that. I'm not aware that the post office here in Greenfield has had anything that would cause us to believe that they're not going to be open. I myself posted a couple of letters in the blue boxes out beside the post office the other day. They were still there. So I'm not aware of that, and I can certainly, we can certainly look into it and see if they're having any issues. But what I will say is, we did install right beside the side door, which is the entrance that people are having to use when they come to City Hall, a very sturdy, very large drop box, locked drop box, that citizens can drop their ballots in, they can pay their bills, they can use it for anything that requires them to be in contact with the City of Greenfield, certainly the, you know, the Clerk's Office, the Treasurer Collector's Office and so forth, and also to use to put their ballots in. I am aware that in the, in the quote unquote, storage room or the vault, that we have boxes and boxes of ballots that have already been brought in, have already been put in the drop box, not necessarily that one that was just put up this past week, maybe it was at the end of last week, and, but even through the front door. So people are voting and exercising their option not to come to the polls. I myself am going to the polls, just because that's what I like to do. So, and I know that Clerk Scott has been doing great work to prepare the polls for voting as well. So I think if you live in Greenfield, you have many options available to you, other than the post office, if you don't feel comfortable dropping it in the mail.
Very good. Thank you for that. Counselor Dolan.
Yeah, just a quick question from Mayor Wiedegartner. About the temporary fire station, I was wondering if we have selected a final location for that, if we're in negotiations to acquire property, or just generally if you have anything to update us on.
I don't at this time, Counselor Dolan per se. We will, we are, I was authorized by the Public Safety Building Committee to enter into negotiations to purchase a property that would house the fire station. So I can probably be better able to update you, maybe even by, I think, is it tomorrow's Library Building Committee? But right now, I don't have a, I mean, we just communicated with the owner of that building just today. So I don't have any response back at this time. But I will be prepared to make that, keep everyone up to date on how that negotiation is going.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Very important. Counselor Elmer.
That was going to be my question. I'm not drawing it.
Okay, very good. Popular topic. Any other questions for the mayor before we move on? Let me just check the chat. No, it's like I'm behind. Okay. Well, we can always come back to that. But thank you, Mayor, and I think we'll turn it over now to Director Louis Gilman.
Hi there. Good evening. I just wanted to give you a quick update on the status of last year's closeout in terms of revenue and expenses. We did discuss this a bit at Ways and Means last month. Considering the COVID epidemic pandemic, we did okay. We, bottom line, came up 225,000 on revenue over budget. I know usually it's much higher than that, but the fact that we were over budget is great. You know, some of the things we took hits on was meals in hotel, parking tickets, and Medicaid. But then there were several superstars, like Pay as You Throw, I got to get Marlow's in there, motor vehicle, building permits, people were very busy during this time, and probably that's part of Pay as You Throw as well. Interest. So bottom line, honestly, I was really happy how FY20's revenue came in. I don't think other communities fared that well. On the expenditure side for '20, it's looking like we'll turn back a million. 200,000 of that, though, is from assessments that are really out of our control. We're given a number we have to use, and then they come in as they come in, you know. So, so bottom line, I think we're in good shape for '20's closeout. Then, kind of a preview into FY21, because the governor did announce that he was going to level fund state aid. So ultimately, this turns into my best case scenario in terms of reductions. Between state aid, probably local receipts and school choice being higher, I'm looking at probably making reductions of a half a million. Now, who would say a half a million is best case? Well, when we were looking at possibilities of 20%, it is best case. So we are starting to work with departments on reductions we can make to bring to council. But honestly, really pleased. We're also super busy with a lot of COVID grants, whether they're FEMA or CARES, or indirectly through the state. There's quite a bit. So there's a lot to keep track of and going on with that. But other than that, if anyone has any questions, we'll be happy to take them.
Thanks for the update. Director Gilman, I see a question already from Counselor Mayo.
Director, I have a question for you. Do you have any idea how much money the town has spent on COVID preparation?
Well, I don't have totals from the school yet, but, and, but there are some school specific grants. We are at probably 300, approaching, approaching 300. So it hasn't been...
300,000?
Yeah. So, but some of that, we've already received the money for.
Okay.
And so I'm, and I'm including that when I say overall, you know?
Yep.
So we've done pretty well, and that's a tribute to our emergency management staff.
Do you expect to get any of that money back?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. No, no, that's what I'm saying. It's very busy. It's, the FEMA paperwork is incredible. And so we're working on that. We have to submit for reimbursement from the CARES Act. We're also looking at possibilities. You know, I'm constantly getting questions of, can I spend it this way or that way? So I investigate it and get back to folks. But yes, we are anticipating getting reimbursement on that.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Next, we have a question from Counselor Gilmore.
So my question is really similar. I know that we heard from Chair Proetti earlier that the school has spent money that is not actually in their budget, because, I mean, how are we ever going to know this? And I'm wondering, the other departments must be dealing with a similar situation. I don't know if there are any, any departments that maybe weren't able to expend funds because projects have been halted. If you could kind of give us an overall, like, well, what I'm getting at is like, are we looking at interdepartmental transfers? And if so, what do those kind of look like? And I know you don't have all the details yet.
I just want to clarify, interdepartmental transfers on what? Could you specify? Are you talking about CARES Act and FEMA money?
No, no. It's hard for me to specify because I don't know who has a shortfall and who has an overage. But I imagine there are departments who are not spending the money that has been budgeted because due to COVID, you know, projects may have been put on hold. And so it's hard for me to come up with the specifics because I'm trying to ask, like, do you have specifics? So are there, you know, do we have to shift money around at all from one department to other departments to cover some of these overages? And is that, is there money available to do that?
Well, first of all, we aren't doing that because at the start of the pandemic, we received authorization from the Department of Revenue to deficit spend in a special revenue account. So are positive that something will be reimbursed by FEMA or CARES, we put it in these funds and we get reimbursement for it. So departments are not spending it out of their budget. And in terms of the school department, they have received their own reopening grant of, I believe, $422,000. So, but I have reached out to them in trying to coordinate possible uses of CARES money. It is just very limited on what you may use it for. And that's part of the frustration. Everyone can think of wonderful things, but they, they limit it, and, especially on FEMA, CARES has slightly more leeway. And in many ways, it's frustrating. I wish they would just honestly give it to the communities and let them decide how best to use it. But that's not how it's working.
Okay, so maybe I'll send you an email because I think that what I'm talking about is more long term, because I feel like a lot of these expenses are things that we're going to have to absorb, you know, over the course of years and years before we kind of fully recover from everything. And I think the look on your face means we're kind of talking past each other. So I'll write it out, and then I can, you know, we can hammer it out back and forth.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. Any further questions for Director Gilman? Okay, not seeing any now. I'm sure we'll, we'll look forward to further updates as everything changes. But thanks, Director. Oh, wait, no, we got one more from Counselor DeSorga.
I, I have a question. Are we obligated, and I don't know if you can say this, are we obligated on the transportation end? Because I think that may have been where Counselor Gilmore was going. Are we obligated on the transportation end as far as education if we will not be transporting?
So this is a really interesting situation. So the Department of Revenue is allowing schools to come to an agreement to pay transportation vendors something, but it can't be more, if they receive stimulus or CARES Act or COVID funds, between getting the COVID funds and what the district is paying, it can't be more than what you would have paid them normal. So there is probably certainly some savings in those accounts on the school side. However, you know, it does take an actual sworn affidavit from the vendor that what the school is paying them and what they've received in federal funds does not exceed the amount of the original contract. But that kind of makes sense, you know? The original contract is what you would have paid them anyway, so they shouldn't be paid more than that. So I anticipate that it's not easy. And there's, it's not just transportation. There's other services in this category, far more complicated for a school department, I will say that, than for the city on the contracted services.
Thank you.
All right. Any further questions? Not seeing any. So thank you, Director Gilman. Next up, I think that Director Letourneau has, is here to speak on the veteran services lease. It's my preference as chair to field questions about that during the motions and considerations portion of the meeting, which hopefully won't be too late. Is that okay with you? I see Director Letourneau nodding and giving a thumbs up. So councilors, please hold off on your questions, but we will get to that. So now it's time for public comment. And before we get into it, I want to just repeat for anyone who wasn't here at the beginning of the meeting, that if you are here for public comment, to write your name in the chat window, and I will call on you in the order that people have signed up. We did have a request after the last meeting that councilors leave their cameras on during public comment. That that's a respectful thing to do, and I see that many of our councilors have them on. And to the public, I do want to let you know that, that some councilors may have bandwidth concerns or privacy concerns that keep them from turning their cameras on. You know, this is a pandemic. We are meeting remotely under extraordinary circumstances. And for most of us, you can see we're meeting out of our living rooms. But thank you, councilors, for turning your cameras on and listening to public comment. So you will have three minutes to say your piece. Please start by stating your name and your address, or at least the street you live on. And first up is Molly Merritt. And first up is Molly Merritt.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Okay, Molly Merritt, 30 Solar Way. So, I am here to again express my support for defunding the Greenfield Police Department and for allocating money from the police budget towards things that support the safety and well-being of all of our residents. Specifically, I want to again express my support for the defund demands that were put forth by the Franklin County Racial Justice Group. A number of us stated what those demands were at the last meeting, so hopefully people are familiar with them. I'm not going to repeat them again. I'm fairly new to town. I moved here in November. I'm still getting a sense for who the people in positions of power are and the specific ways that certain issues impact our town. But based on what I've observed so far, there are two things that really jump out at me in these conversations around police brutality and defunding the police. So I just wanted to speak to the council and the mayor about that. So first, I see people, including the mayor and some of the council members and the police chief, implying that racism isn't a problem in our town. What seems to be missing here to me is the understanding that racism is deeply baked into the foundation of our country and all of its institutions and all of our cities and towns. If we see racism as something that only bad people do to be intentionally mean, we're missing how racism actually functions to uphold white supremacy. So I think we need to acknowledge that if we grow up in a racist society, which all of us did, we internalize racist ideas. And unless we're actively recognizing and disrupting those ideas, we are going to continue to hold and perpetuate them. And I think if those of us who are having this conversation around defunding the police, if we're reporting that residents of color experience racism in Greenfield, we're not slandering the police chief, we're not slandering the mayor or anyone else in power, we're just naming a problem that exists. And we all of us have a responsibility to understand and address that problem. Secondly, I think some of the council members, as well as the mayor and the police chief, don't understand the goals of the defund movement. We're not talking about replacing cops with social workers and making no other changes to our town. We're talking about reducing and eliminating the conditions which cause people to be in distress and then potentially harm each other. So it's not just about who responds when someone is in a crisis. It's about using our town budget to create conditions that prevent people from being in a crisis. This means increasing access to jobs, housing, healthcare, and mental health and substance treatment. It could obviously be a long process to build such a society, but we can take steps to start that now. And we're seeing examples of this all over the country. For example, Austin, Texas, just reallocated $150 million, which is one-third of its police budget, from the police department towards violence prevention, food access, and reproductive healthcare programs. So my question is, do we really need to hire more police officers in Greenfield? Can we instead use that money to invest in things that improve people's lives and their well-being? Can we have conversations? Is that my plan being open?
Thank you, Molly. Yes, that's your time.
Sorry.
That's okay. Thank you for your comment. And for everyone, the buzzer does go off at three minutes, and we respectfully ask you to just try to finish your thought. And we thank you for coming to speak. Next is Eve Bogdanoff.
I think she left.
Are you still here? I'm going to unmute you. Okay, yep, are you here?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. This is Eve Bogdanoff. I live on Shatter. I appreciate the leadership. This is unprecedented times, so I'm grateful for everybody trying to figure this all out. I am a Greenfield homeowner, and I have my daughter in the Greenfield Public Schools. I've also been in three different leadership positions in nonprofit agencies in Greenfield, and I've been a resident here for almost 20 years. I'm currently in private practice as a psychotherapist. And I'm concerned about how both our town and our school system are responding to the BLM requests that were put forth that Molly referenced. And I'm concerned about the militarization of the police department and the deeply underfunded schools, especially as it relates to the schools trying to respond to COVID-19. And I'm disheartened by the overall federal leadership in this. But also, you know, in light of that, it is really putting the onus of responsibility on towns and cities to show up and respond to these things. And I know everyone is ill-equipped to do that in many ways, not completely. But, so, I am concerned about my clients of color. I work with a very diverse caseload. I'm concerned about my clients of color who come to session and report negative experiences in the town. Most recently, I have had clients reporting concerns about the incident where the bus driver tried to hit a black man with his kids in town, and another client reporting a really concerning issue with a man walking around the woods in Greenfield with a gun, looking for black people. And I don't know what the actual details of this were, but when I hear these stories from clients that it impacts potentially, you know, certainly their mental health, but also impacts my business, I want to be a business where people feel comfortable coming. The other issue is that there was a news found on Lincoln Street right after the BLM march. And prior to that being found, there was a red pickup truck with a big pro-Trump sign on it. And, you know, I don't know what ended up happening with that, but those kinds of incidents increase the fear of people who live here. And I feel like our town leadership has an obligation to be real proactive, much in the way that the Greenfield Savings Bank has been, by putting the messaging out there that racism has no place in our community and that we're a community that is deeply committed to equity and we're a community that values that. I'm sorry, I'm out of time and I'm so wordy, but I hope at least some of my comments got across. Thank you very much.
They did. Thank you, Eve, for your comments. Next, we have Pamela Goodwin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'll see if I can get a video on. I'm signing the era of club letters for the election. Thank you for my time. As a former educator, I'm over halfway through the August 12th School Committee thing. It's been super interesting. My heart goes out to everyone that's working on this really tricky issue. And one of the comments was that we needed to reach out to our representatives, our senators, and the federal government because there is just no money. I would love to see the little tiny young ones be able to show up in person as much as one kindergarten teacher named Michael, who keeps stating this, as well as special needs. And I'm thinking of volunteering at 72 years of age just to go and see if I could be of some assistance. Because I don't view myself at risk. I view myself as these kids really need help in person, if possible. So my question is, what do I say to Jo Commerford? I speak with her often in her office. I also speak often with Jim McGovern. And I'm really concerned that there's just no money, as well as understanding that some people are resigning and just refuse to go in. So I don't want to blame anybody about anything, but what would you people recommend? Or how could we get the public aware that they need to reach out to the state? I heard the governor the same day that I was listening to part of this as I traveled, and I was like, what is he talking about? Three-quarters? I believe he said three-quarters of the state have in-school opening up with children. And I'm thinking like, I don't know, I don't see three-quarters of it happening. So I'm just wondering what I personally can do and how can we tell people to what they can do to go and scream for help? Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela. And feel free to drop an email to the council if you'd like to engage us further. Now, this time doesn't give us the space to do a back and forth, but we do appreciate you coming to speak. Is there, so that's all I see as far as the people who signed up for public comment. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak at this time? If anyone is on the phone and unable to type into the chat, feel free to speak up. Or if you just haven't signed up yet and would like to speak, this is your chance. And if not, we will be moving on shortly. Let's see. So, I'm not seeing anyone else. And everyone's given their three minutes, so I can only let people speak once. But please do drop us an email if you'd like, or come back to speak to us next month when we do this again. So, we will move on now to a public hearing. In accordance with Home Rule Charter, the Greenfield City Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August 19, 2020, at 7:00 PM at John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street, or via remote access to receive public input on the following. Repurpose $180,000 from the Maple Brook Culvert to I&amp;I for evaluation and repairs. The city council may consider the same on Wednesday, August 19, 2020, at 7:00 PM via remote access. Materials can be obtained from the city clerk's office, 14 Court Square, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, or by phone, 413-772-1555, extension 6163. Ashley Stempel, Ray, Greenfield City Council President. City Council's second reading, August 19, 2020. Repurpose $180,000 from the Maple Brook Culvert to I&amp;I for evaluation and repairs. So, and I will be, I guess, opening the public hearing here at 8:04 PM. So if at any point there is anyone from the public to speak on this point, the hearing is open, and we'll close it later. So now we'll move on to motions, orders, and resolutions. And of course, it looks like actually this is the first motion. And so, let's see, this was from Ways and Means. Do I have a, oh, I'm going to let Clerk Scott speak, please.
Thank you, Vice President Wheeler. The public hearing needs to be closed before the motion can be considered.
Thank you. I thought it probably did. It does feel a little silly, but I will now close the public hearing at 8:05. And do I have a volunteer from the Ways and Means Committee to read this motion? Raise your hand if anyone. Counselor Elmer.
Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council approves repurposing in the $180,000 of previously authorized for repair of the Maple Brook Culvert for I&amp;I inflow and infiltration evaluation and repairs.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Still move, Jarvis.
All right, I was seconded by Counselor Jarvis. So, is there discussion? We do have Director Warner here. He did speak to us briefly. First of all, I'm going to give the report from committee, which was a, and please, Director Bottomley, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this was, I mean, Counselor Bottomley, I believe this was a unanimous positive recommendation. This is possibly the last reappropriation from the Maple Brook Culvert money, and this is generally a prioritization, and the Ways and Means agreed with the use. But I'll turn it over to Director Warner to explain it better.
Good evening. Thank you. So, we've been talking about inflow and infiltration probably almost every council meeting for a year, it seems, or better. So, this portion, we call it Phase 3. When I went down to Springfield about a year ago to get an extension on our consent order, and the final draft came through for signature, this was kind of slipped in at the ends. There was some further sub-basins and sections that DEP wanted us to do an evaluation on and assume the appropriate repairs. But in short, the consent order is somewhere around 36 pages. There's a lot to it. There has been so much work done in the last year with the appropriations. We've hit every timeline on the first four or five items. We've had to turn into DEP. In fact, we've been ahead of time. So this would be the last and final piece under the consent order, which in the end covers about three-quarters of the city for our evaluations of all our pipe work, which is a lot of linear footage or miles. So this would be, again, the last piece so that we can enter into the construction phase or forming a construction plan, which is the biggest portion of the consent order. So, we have an opportunity for the same company. They're finishing up Phase 2. I just met with Wright Pierce the other day. Phase 1 is done. The report's in. Phase 2, the draft report is due in mid-September. And they're available, and the subcontractors are available to move right into Phase 3 with the dye testing, the camera work, and some smoke testing, and final report. So, I think in summary, you know, repurposing the Maple Brook money, it just became a priority under the consent order. This is something, you know, we have to do. A quick word on the Maple Brook that I had said last night, if there's any concerns. We just walked it once again in the spring, and we haven't found any evidence being in that culvert two or three times in the last year of anything that's near significant to have to repair immediately. The Maple Brook Culvert goes back about 80 or 90 years. We know it's undersized, but that's a much bigger picture than to just fix a small piece in the middle or expand it. So, I just wanted to touch on that just a little bit.
Counselor DeSorga, sorry, I was on mute, as always. Thanks, Director Warner. And Counselor DeSorga, did you have a question?
I do. Director Warner, thank you very much. I had a question about, I was rereading this before tonight, and they were talking about from 1992, you looked at, I think it was 834 possible illicit connections. Letters were sent out to so many people, and it sounded like 400 of the people responded. And so, my first question was, like, are those mostly from businesses or private homes? And what did we do about the ones that didn't respond? And is it like one area of town more than another? And that was it.
Thank you for the question. So, we're going to be following up on the ones that did not respond as part of the second consent order because some of the pieces of the first consent order carried over. And we're actually confirming a lot of these illicit connections by doing the evaluations that we're doing with camera systems. So, most of that was derived from field notes over the years on the 834. A lot of them have been confirmed. Some have been repaired, as you noted, and some have also been confirmed not to be the case. And some have also been confirmed not to be the case. They may have been disconnected and plugged, but that wasn't confirmed in any of the notes going back many years. And it includes the whole city. We don't, we, most of Main Street, the roof leaders and all of that was evaluated. There's only one portion that has roof leaders connected to the sewer at this point, which obviously is I&amp;I. And we're working with the owner on eliminating that from the system.
So is it mostly businesses?
No, no, it's actually mostly household connections if I were to do a percentage if I ran numbers.
Thank you.
Yeah, in fact, a very high percentage.
Okay, any further questions for the director? And if not, any discussion on the item? Counselor Elmer.
I just want to say, reading that consent order, they really put us through the wringer. That is tough stuff. I appreciate all the work you put into it, Marla.
Yeah, I think that was the importance. I've been using the word reprioritizing. They really ramped that up 20 pages or so from the first one. So we're up against it, but you know, we're holding our own and we're, and you know, all the help from the council and the appropriations certainly goes a long way to take care of this thing as we go. So it's much appreciated on our end for that also.
All right, very good. Unless there's any further discussion, we will take a roll call vote on the reappropriation.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Clerk. So we'll now turn to page 50 on your agenda packet. Could I have another volunteer from Ways and Means to read the Veteran Services Order?
You can, if I can bring it.
Thank you, Counselor Forgie. Take your time.
Okay. Still going, hang on. Oh my goodness.
We have the consent order to blame yet again.
My goodness gracious.
I'm so excited everybody read that.
Okay, page 50. The city council, on recommendation of Mayor Wieder Gardner, and in accordance with MGL Chapter 30B, Section 12B, ordered that the city council approve a five-year contract extension for the lease of the premises at 284 Main Street, Greenfield, Mass, location of the Veterans Service Office between the City of Greenfield and Holyoke Property Management LLC.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Ricketts.
All right, moved by Counselor Forgie and seconded by Counselor Ricketts. I will read the report from committee, which was a mixed positive, four yes and one no, in favor of approving the renegotiated lease. Overall, it was felt that this was necessary and did improve the terms of the lease, considering the, some considerations which Director Laterno will explain in a moment. There was a dissenting opinion that, I'll try to summarize. I think it was that we are in a state of emergency and a rental increase in this time may be inappropriate. And that money, we should be prioritizing our schools. And, but like I said, it was a positive recommendation. And I'll turn it over now to Director Laterno to summarize.
Thank you. I've been on mute for so long, I'm hoping this is working okay. So I think that all, most of the rationale was included in the original order backup paperwork. And then I sent a memo to the city council last week with some additional rationale. The only math that I did after the fact is to give you all some more information. I can read off now. But just to verify that, this is a lease extension that won't go into effect until 2022. So currently, we are at a fixed rental rate that'll stay the same until then. When it does go up in 2022, we've negotiated with the landlord for a fair rent increase over the following five years. So the rent increase will go over the course of each year through 2027 for the rent, for this lease extension. And in speaking with, you know, in terms of state of emergency and where our money goes, and in speaking with Director Gilman, known budget numbers are much better than unknown. And so if we don't extend the lease, we don't actually know what the numbers will look like in 2022. And then the other part of this is, of course, that the landlord is now going to be responsible for helping us replace an HVAC system in that building that they wouldn't have been replacing before. On top of that is kind of the non-numerical benefits. The Director at Veteran Services, he has stated they love that location. It's very convenient for our veterans. We have a very high population of veterans here in Greenfield and in Franklin County. And it's on Main Street, it's accessible, it's on the ground level. It is right near parking, and it is on our public transportation line. He pointed out at Ways and Means that they do have clients who both have to take the bus or walk from the various locations, including something I hadn't thought about till he pointed it out, but sometimes if they have actions or business with the courts, it's walking distance from there. So that's a great benefit of the location. And moving, as everybody probably knows, is pretty costly. And just to point out the one last bit of math I did do is that currently we are paying $9.86 a square foot for that location. We will continue to pay that through February of 2022. And at the end of the five years beyond that, at the end of the lease term, if this extension is passed in 2027, the per-square-foot amount will be $11.78. Currently in Greenfield, commercial space of that size or that type runs for between $12 and $16 per square foot. So although it is an increase, we're still well below market rate. And that's just all really good news, you know. I know that I personally had to utilize services at Veteran Services for both my father and my father-in-law, helping them with some things and bringing them there. It's a great location. It's right near City Hall, so if you have lots of business to do downtown, you can do all of it. And also just a reminder to the councilors, you're really, you are voting on the length of the lease, not the technical terms. But I did want to make sure that you guys knew we have done our homework and due diligence and making sure it's a big deal as well. But I'm ready to answer questions.
You'd think, I'm going to learn one of these days, I'm sorry.
We don't, none of us did.
Clerk Scott, I actually wanted to turn it over to you. Did you have a comment?
Pardon?
Do you have a comment?
Well, I have a reminder for the council that this is a contract that, under Article I Charter, Contract Review, Section 27.3, is supposed to be with the council for 30 days to have their review. If the council is going to vote the lease prior to that 30-day, that there needs to be a vote made to waive the 30-day submission requirements. And that needs to be a two-thirds vote of the council.
Thank you, Clerk Scott, for that clarification. I knew about the clause, I didn't realize that a vote was needed. So we may get to that. But first, we'll take questions from councilors. And I believe Counselor Forgie had the first.
Thank you. I'm trying to determine, is this property on facing Main Street the same property that the town is looking at as part of the relocation for the fire station?
No, it is not. It is the 278 Main Street block. It's the same block as the Thai Restaurant and Baker Office Supply area, roughly.
Okay, thank you.
And next, Counselor Jarvis.
Hi Danny, mine's just more of a comment. Just want councilors to keep in mind, if we don't agree to the lease, that this leaves the building, the site open for the owner to put the building out to lease. And then we go back to square one, trying to find a better deal, which I don't think we're going to. So with everything in mind, the accessibility parking and the rate that we have, I don't think we should chance him going out and finding another occupant for the building. So that's all I had. Not really a question, I let you off the hook.
Thanks, Counselor Jarvis. Counselor Disorder?
Yes, and so if we did this on a timely fashion, they could be starting on the HVAC system now, which was something that they would be pleased with. That's correct, is it not?
Yeah, so I'll clarify that. So because this happened during the summer and the heat wave, the HVAC system actually failed. And so the Office of Veteran Services did actually already get bids for replacement of the HVAC system and has found, they're actually decided to go ahead with the work, kind of working with the landlord for a vendor that they both liked, even though the landlord isn't technically on the hook for it yet. So this would be able to backfill any money that ends up being spent before the vote. So that's why we asked, it came up at committee chairs, that if time was of the essence, you all would be willing to vote on it before waiting an extra 30 days would be, so that stuff could get done and sorted out faster. It's a little risky to have to start doing that work and know that we would be, the city side would be responsible for all of that money.
Okay, any more questions from councilors? Okay, so seeing none, we will take a vote on whether to waive the 30-day requirement on contract approvals. And as Clerk Scott said, this requires a two-thirds majority. If it, am I correct, Clerk Scott?
It does, we do need a motion and a second.
So moved Dolan.
Seconded Jarvis.
So moved Gilmore.
Okay, it was moved by Counselor Dolan and seconded by Counselor Jarvis to waive the requirements. So all those in favor, this will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer? Counselor Elmer? Thank you. Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you, Clerk Scott. So that was, of course, the motion to waive the requirement. Is there any final discussion or questions on the lease renewal before we take a vote? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye, this will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer? Counselor Elmer? I think Counselor Elmer is having a little bit of technical difficulty. I will come back to him. Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer? Let's see if I can. He's having a low bandwidth issue, and I am unable to mute him. Counselor Elmer indicated through the chat that he votes yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Elmer, do you vote yes?
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much. The motion passes.
Thank you, Clerk Scott. Thank you, councilors, and thanks Chief Laterno.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move next to page 64 in your packet, and I'll turn it over to Counselor Gwynn.
I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 2-10 affirms the following reappointment by the mayor of the Conservation Commission, Rachel Lindsay, for a three-year term to expire June 30, 2023.
Second, Ricketts.
Moved by Counselor Gwynn, seconded by Counselor Ricketts. Counselor Gwynn, is there a report from committee?
It was a positive unanimous recommendation to affirm the reappointment.
Very good, is there discussion? And seeing none, we will take another roll call vote.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Very good. So we'll move next to page 66. I don't believe that this went to a subcommittee. Counselor Gwynn, did this go to your committee?
It did not.
It did not. I I, I'll read it in that case. I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council hereby approves the attached state primary election warrant for September 1, 2020, and further authorizes the City Council President to sign said warrant on behalf of the City Council.
Second, Forgé.
Seconded by Counselor Forgé. Clerk Scott?
Vice President Wheeler, the warrant needs to be read.
Of course it does. Thank you, Clerk Scott.
You're very welcome.
This might be a good time to get a glass of water for anyone who's thirsty. Commonwealth of Massachusetts William Francis Galvin Secretary of the Commonwealth Warrant for September 1, 2020 State Primary to the Constables of the City of Greenfield. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said city who are qualified to vote in primaries to vote at precinct 1 through 9, Greenfield High School Gymnasium, 21 Bar Avenue on Tuesday, the first day of September 2020, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the following purpose: to cast their votes in the state primaries for the candidates of political parties for the following offices: Senator in Congress for this Commonwealth; Representative in Congress, 2nd District; Counselor, 8th District; Senator in General Court, Hampshire Franklin and Worcester District; Representative in General Court, 2nd Berkshire District; Register of Probate, Franklin County. Hereof fail not make return of this warrant with your doings thereon at the time and place of said voting. Given under our hands, this 20th day of August, 2020, City Council President Ashley Stumpel is authorized by vote of the Greenfield City Council by Constable posting. All right, I believe, did we already have a second?
I'll second again.
It was seconded twice now by Counselor Forgé. Do we have discussion on the item? Clerk Scott, would you like to say anything?
I would like to say something that I have, there is a typo on the warrant. Given under our hands, this 19th day of August, 2020, is how it should read.
Very good. Will a friendly amendment be enough to correct that? All right, I'll make that. Any further discussion on the warrant? Or questions for Clerk Scott? Ding. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. This will be, again, a roll call vote.
Counselor Jarvis.
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn.
Yes.
Counselor Disorga.
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley.
Yes.
Counselor Dolan.
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore.
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler.
Yes.
Counselor Mayo.
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Elmer.
Yes.
Counselor Forgé.
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. I'll ask now for a motion to suspend the rules of procedure for the purpose of moving the executive session to the end of the meeting. Would anyone care to make that motion?
So moved, Jar-
Second, Gilmore.
Moved by Counselor Jarvis and seconded by Counselor Gilmore. So this will be a roll call vote to suspend the rules of procedure.
Counselor Jarvis.
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn.
Yes.
Counselor Disorga.
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley.
Yes.
Counselor Dolan.
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore.
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler.
Yes.
Counselor Mayo.
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Elmer.
Yes.
Counselor Forgé.
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts.
Yes.
The motion passes.
All right, thank you, everyone. So the rules of procedure have been suspended, but we will continue in the order listed on the agenda. So next, we have presentation of petitions and similar papers. Seeing none, report of committees. Would any subcommittees like to give a report on your activities this month? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next, we have unfinished business. Old business. New business. Counselor Disorga.
Yes, could we please be all getting the WebEx recordings from the subcommittee meetings? I missed the first 10 minutes of A&amp;O and I heard there was a lively discussion at CRE that I missed. It appears that the WebEx subcommittee meetings go to the members of that subcommittee. Can the rest of us watch?
So I'm gonna, now let, now Clerk Scott, please correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that the WebEx recordings, while they do go to the subcommittees, are actually deleted within a couple of days? Is that the case?
The recordings are taken off of WebEx and put onto the administrative assistants' computers, so they're saved. We have them. They're not deleted. So if anyone would like recordings to be sent to them, sometimes depending on the size of the recording, it may not work so well, but we can send you recordings if you would like them.
So, and what I would actually say is, I believe that GCTV has been broadcasting or rebroadcasting all of the subcommittee meetings as of, I forget, but I want to say for the past couple of months. And so it should be, if you go to gctv.org, you actually should be able to watch them. It may take them a couple of days to post, but they should be there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? Seeing none, motions for reconsideration? Okay. So seeing none. We are going to move shortly into an executive session. Counselors, this is the first time we've done this remotely. You should have a link in your council email to a separate meeting. And so we will ask you to, in just a moment, log off of this one and log into the next one. Now, Clerk Scott, this is my first time doing this. Is there language I need to read specifically?
So there's a motion in the packet on page 68 that someone can read the motion, make the motion. We will have to vote by roll call vote to go into executive session. A time will have to be stated and it will also need to be stated by you, Vice President Wheeler, whether the council will be reconvening to regular session or if we will just adjourn from executive session. So beyond the motion that's in the packet, you need to state the time that we go into executive session and whether we will adjourn from executive session or reconvene.
Very good. Thank you, Clerk Scott. Do I have a volunteer to read the motion? If anyone would be so kind, it's on page 68.
I can do it.
Thank you.
Forgé.
Counselor Forgé.
Okay, the City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council votes to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21.3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, where an open session would have a detrimental effect and future details would compromise the reason for going into executive session. The following is a summary listing of the items to be discussed. Litigation involving International Container Company, ICC. Litigation involving E. Brachia. Litigation involving D. Kelly. Litigation involving P. Is it Buchanan or Buken? Not sure.
It is Buchanan.
Buchanan, thank you. And litigation involving T. Dodge. Roll call majority vote required.
Is there a second?
Second, Ricketts.
All right, moved by Counselor Forgé and seconded by Counselor Ricketts. And I believe that, I don't think we can hold discussion on this. I may be wrong, but I believe this is just an immediate roll call vote.
Counselor Wheeler.
Yes, please.
If I may, the time is 8:44. And my question is, will the council be reconvening from executive session or adjourning from executive session?
Very good. The council will adjourn from executive session.
Thank you so much. Counselor Jarvis.
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn.
Yes.
Counselor Disorga.
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley.
Yes.
Counselor Dolan.
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore.
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler.
Yes.
Counselor Mayo.
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Elmer.
Yes.
Counselor Forgé.
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts.
Yes.
The roll call is unanimous?
Thank you, Clerk Scott. We will now be closing the open session and moving into executive session.